No one in our community should worry about where their next meal is coming from. Yet the stark reality is that, right now, thousands of Center County residents are struggling to afford food for themselves and their families. For 40 years, the State College Food Bank has been responding with compassion and commitment, providing free food to individuals and families across Center County. There are no income qualifications to receive groceries, which are distributed three days a week through our pantry. Our dedicated staff and volunteers never stop working to meet the needs of our community, so one day, no one will go hungry in Center County. The State College Food Bank.
You're watching CNET, Center County's government and educational access network.
We'll call the Center County Board of Commissioners meeting on Tuesday, May 30th, to order here at 10 o'clock. All those who are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Find a seat wherever you can, Gordon. Sorry, you're sort of toward the end of the agenda today. One with another entrepreneur.
Thank you.
Eric, meet Gordon. Gordon, meet Eric. So, do we have any public comment for items that are not appearing on today's agenda? This would be the time for those comments. All right, don't see any? We have an action-packed agenda today. Are there any additions to the agenda? Commissioner Concepcion, Commissioner Dershowitz? All right, so now we will move to our meeting minutes from the Board of Commissioners meeting and work session held on May 23rd. Do we have any changes or alterations to those minutes? John?
Just a small change to one item in the minutes. There is a typo in the ordinance number for ordinance number two. It's actually ordinance number one. The ordinance was properly advertised as ordinance one. It's been posted on our website and other places as ordinance one. This is just a typographical error that was made. Now, typically, ordinances don't even get a number until they're passed, and the action that was taken on this was merely for the advertising, so it is in no way actually tied to the passing of any type of ordinance at this point. So, we would just like to have the minutes reflect ordinance one as it was advertised.
Any questions about that? We have a motion to approve the meeting minutes with the small change for the typo.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the meetings held on May 23rd do so by saying aye, aye, pose nay, motion carries. All right, we have two exciting proclamations this morning. Proclamation number 26 proclaiming the importance of gun violence prevention and supporting safe and secure firearm storage initiatives in Center County, and I think we have upwards of three people speaking on this. Eric, Samantha, and possibly our Sheriff, Brian Samsel. So, I don't know who's starting off, but if you'd come to the podium and state your name and municipality and why this proclamation is important to you.
Sure. Hi, my name is Erin Garth. I live in Center County in Half Moon Township. I am a mother of two vivacious young girls, a paraprofessional with the State College Area School District, and a volunteer with Be Smart, which is a program that promotes safe gun storage. On behalf of my co-lead for Be Smart, Carrie Gustafson, who couldn't be here today, and on behalf of all of our volunteers, I want to express our deep gratitude for passing this proclamation and recognizing the critical need for gun violence prevention. Every town for gun safety maintains a database of unintentional shootings by children in the United States. In an analysis of the over 2,800 incidents that took place between 2015 and 2022, in which a child under the age of 18 unintentionally shot themself or others, the data reveals the following: Nearly one child gains access to a loaded firearm and unintentionally shoots themself or another or someone else every day in America. That's an average of 350 children a year. The victims of shootings by children are most often also children. More than seven in 10 unintentional child shootings occur in or around homes, and nearly one in every three unintentional shooters were preschoolers. These are preventable tragedies. The Be Smart campaign was launched to raise awareness that secure gun storage, specifically storing guns locked, unloaded, and separate from ammunition, can save children's lives. Be Smart emphasizes that it's an adult responsibility to keep kids from accessing guns, and that every adult can play a role in keeping kids and communities safer. My co-lead, Carrie, sits on a subcommittee of the Center County Suicide Prevention Task Force called CASE, Creating a Safe Environment. This committee represents safe firearm storage as part of reducing suicides. In October of last year, the group put together 30 lethal means safety toolkits, which included gun locks, lethal means, safety educational materials, the county, the local county crisis phone number, and the veterans' crisis line number, as well as information on suicide rate from firearms within the Commonwealth. There was a total of 700 gun locks provided to various locations, which included local law enforcement, senior centers, mental health agencies, gun stores, and local VFW and American Legion posts within Center County. Safe and secure storage of guns as a means to prevent suicide is so critical because we know that firearms are used in half of all suicide deaths, and that 90% of suicide attempts with a firearm are fatal. We also know that approximately 25% of those who attempt suicide deliberate for five minutes or less. Anything we can do that delays a suicidal person's access to firearms will help to save lives. So, again, on behalf of the volunteers who are working so hard to spread the word that safe gun storage saves lives, we thank you for passing this proclamation today.
Thank you, Erin. Samantha, would you like to say anything? It's okay if you're batting cleanup, Sheriff?
Yeah, that's fine.
Good morning. I'm Samantha Bruno. I also live in Center County. I am the area director from the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. No one takes their life for a single reason. We all have mental health, just as we all have physical health. And conditions such as depression, anxiety, and substance use problems, especially when unaddressed, increase the risk of suicide. That risk is greater when a firearm is present and accessible in a home. Temporarily removing lethal means from someone who is suicidal greatly reduces the likelihood of that person dying by suicide, because it gives at-risk individuals something they crucially need: time. Removing firearms and other lethal means from the equation allows time for both the moment of intense suicidal crisis to pass and for someone to intervene with mental health support and resources. AFSP endorses suicide prevention education as a basic tenet of firearm safety and responsible gun ownership. From practicing safe storage and the temporary removal of access to firearms when someone is at risk, to learning common risk factors and warning signs for suicide, there are simple actions we can all take to help save lives. In 2021, 55% of all suicide deaths in the U.S. were by a firearm. Of all firearm-related deaths, 54% are suicide deaths. 90% of suicide attempts with a firearm are fatal. Research shows that secure storage of guns reduces suicide risk. Secure storage means storing all of your guns unloaded and secured, such as locked with a cable or trigger lock, or in a gun safe. The best way to help protect a person in distress is to temporarily remove their access to lethal means, including firearms, until the person is no longer in a state of crisis. AFSP just wants to thank the commissioners for your support of safe firearm storage and suicide prevention and for this proclamation. Thank you.
Thanks, Samantha. Sheriff, anything else you'd like to add?
I will be a little briefer.
All right.
No, I'm on the CASE Committee as well with Carrie Gustafson, and there's a group of us there. I joined this group for veteran suicide prevention awareness, as well as Center County prevention awareness. So, I'm in the group for a couple of different reasons. I support what we're doing. We issued probably, we have gun locks in our office we hand out, people ask for them, we have a little sign on our window, and they come and get their license to carry. So, we probably issue 120, 140 locks already in the last eight months, probably nine months ago. So, it's a program that helps. If it can help in any way, we're willing to do that. All new guns come with gun locks, as presided by law now, but, you know, the ones we helped distribute to the local gun stores as well. So, I'm here for veteran suicide, and that's raise awareness for that as well. So, that's one of the major things. We lose 22 veterans a day. So, it's one thing I'm supporting of in the whole group. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you. That's great proclamation, then get their picture.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff. Thanks for your concern for the community. Commissioner Concepcion, anything you'd like to add?
I'd just like to thank you for advocating on these issues. I think, as new parents, we all learned how to baby-proof our homes, and this is just a, storing guns safely is just like storing prescription medications, or household cleaning products, or anything else that is not safe for your child to access. It's part of childproofing your home. And any, every responsible gun owner, just like any person who drives a car, needs to be aware of the safety considerations that you're responsible for as a gun owner. I think, you know, the issues around gun violence prevention are really close to the mission of many of our county's departments in terms of human services, in terms of keeping kids safe, in terms of helping those with mental health needs, and this kind of awareness building is just really critical. We know that gun deaths are actually the leading cause of deaths for children under 18 in the United States, and a significant portion of those could be prevented with safe storage. So, thanks for building awareness on this, and getting information out to families throughout our community is really critical. So, thank you.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
Yeah, I don't think anybody is ever going to argue that safe gun storage makes sense, particularly when there are folks at risk, whether because of age or mental state.
We, last year, we did a, I did a little show and tell of all the different, some of the different types, but I would encourage, if you have any quantity of firearms, to consider a, some sort of locked cabinet or a safe. It does two things. First of all, it does provide security from maybe the little ones, but at the same time, it secures them against theft, which is another big issue, that, you know, keeping guns out of the hands of criminals is just as important, and I think that's another issue that this can address if done properly. So, I think we need to look at this kind of at a 360-degree view and figure out how to keep our, you know, not only our families safe, but keep society safe as well from the misuse of stolen firearms.
Thanks, Steve. I think a couple of very important points have been raised. In the United States, basically, a child shoots another child every single day through a firearm that they are able to find and accidentally discharge, and as you mentioned, I think it was 25% of individuals contemplate suicide for less than five minutes, and if there was a firearm instantly available that's loaded, you can take your life with that in well under five minutes, whereas if the gun's locked up, the ammunition's in a different spot, it gives people a little more time to think, should I really be doing this? So, very much appreciate what you're raising today, and unless there's any other discussion, I think we could move to a motion.
I will move to adopt proclamation 26 of 2023.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor of adopting proclamation number 26 of 2023 proclaiming the importance of gun violence prevention and supporting safe and secure firearm storage initiatives in Center County do so by saying aye, aye, pose nay, motion carries. Great, could you come up for a quick photo? Right around the front here. Thanks for coming in.
Thanks for having us.
Maybe if the two of you could hold there near the center of the map. I could take that with you.
Oh, fantastic. Thank you.
And then our other exciting proclamation of the day is involving the American Philatelic Society, located just around the corner, a great neighbor here in Belfont, proclaiming the official dedication and opening of a Philatelic Memorial of the Holocaust exhibit. I believe Scott English is here to speak to that.
Good morning, and thank you for having me. I'm Scott English. I'm the executive director of the American Philatelic Society. We have been a proud resident of Center County since 1946, when we opened our first central office in State College, and we have been in Belfont since 2004 at the Match Factory, and we've proudly rehabilitated the building, and we have many great tenants there along with ourselves. The issue I talk about today is a Philatelic Remembrance of the Holocaust. This project started at the Foxborough Regional Charter School in Foxborough, Massachusetts. We are an international organization. We have representatives in over 100 countries around the world, and one of the things that we do is educational outreach. So, the project was to collect 11 million stamps to memorialize each victim of the Nazi regime, not just the Jewish folks who were executed, but everyone that was impacted by the Holocaust. And the project started in 2008 involving fifth through 12th graders at the charter school in Foxborough. We've supported the project, we advertised it, we made people aware of it, and as a result of that, they collected stamps from contributors from 48 of the 50 states, as well as from well over 48 countries around the world. So, we're very proud of the impact we were able to do that. When the project finished and they needed to renovate their library, they asked for help, and so we said we'd take on the project. One of the things that the project did was that it had collages, art projects, things that were done with stamps, as peer-to-peer teaching tools, so that students could understand the impact of the Holocaust in a lot of different ways. So, we started with that, and then we added to it as well a lot of real material that was used, you know, that was sent during the Holocaust, that were sent from ghettos in Poland, that were sent from concentration camps, both in Eastern Europe, as well as in Nazi Germany itself. And the reason why we did that is because, you know, if you look at a recent study that was done, there was a survey done about three years ago that said, only one in three high school students today understand the Holocaust and the actual account that took place, the impact of the lives lost, the targeting of Jews specifically, as well as homosexuals, as well as, you know, others that were targeted as well. And so, our goal is to be not just education around the world, but also to be here in Center County. And so, we took this exhibit, we built it, we had a lot of contributors to it. I know you have been invited to a dedication officially tomorrow night, as well as to a, we have an open house that will happen on June 11th, so that all residents of Center County can come and see it in person. But we're open five days a week, and we've already had school groups come through there. The idea is that we use this as an education center as well. It's the first of many projects we've got going on related to history, not just in the United States or around the world, but also in Center County specifically. And we'd love to have your endorsement of it, we'd love to have a resolution commemorating it, and I'm certainly happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Well, Scott, it's a gorgeous, gorgeous facility, remodeled with extreme care and consideration, but could you mention the times of your two events for the news media very specifically?
Absolutely. So, we're-
Time range and exactly where you are.
We're going to have an invite only with Hillel and with some other groups from Penn State University tomorrow night, that's May 31st. That starts at 6:00 p.m. We'll have an open house on Sunday, June 11th, as part of a, believe it or not, stamp show that occurs in Belfont, and it's very well attended, so I hope you will come as well. And the hours for that are between 10:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. at the Match Factory here in Belfont, that's 100 Match Factory Place, and we'd love to have as many people, residents from Center County, come and visit us during the open house and see for themselves, not just this exhibit, but all of the other things that we do for Center County here. We take pride in being a good corporate citizen, and we want to continue to be so.
Wonderful. I'll turn it over to Commissioner Concepcion. Any questions?
Yeah, I'm just really looking forward to being able to see this tomorrow evening. This is just such an important project in terms of memory, and as the generation that experienced this and for whom this is living memory is now becoming more and more rare among us, to have these opportunities, to see these representations, and through stamps and the mail, that's, it's just a very interesting angle. It really makes it tangible, and so I'm certainly really looking forward to taking my own children there, for them to experience this exhibit, and also, you know, for myself to get to see as a student of history, this is really meaningful, and yeah, looking forward to seeing it. Thank you for doing this.
Thank you. We look forward to having you.
And the amount, we know over the past, you know, 10 to 20 years, there's been an increase in ethnic conflict around the world, and this is a good reminder of how important it is to stand against hatred and ethnic violence. So, thank you.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
Well, I think this is an important topic, and I think I have not yet visited the Holocaust Museum in Washington, D.C., but my family has, and it's a very powerful experience, and I would expect that this will be another example of exactly the education that I think people need to be reminded of in society. Growing up, I had friends who served in World War II that actually helped liberate some of the camps, and I've heard those stories, you know, firsthand, and they're chilling. And I think, you know, to forget about that measure of history in today's society would be a huge mistake, and I think we need to consider everything we can do to educate our young people, that societies and cultures need to be protected, and this is a real example of one of those times where we can make that education real. So, I applaud your efforts and hope you're very successful in getting the word out.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Scott. And so, your big public event is June-
June the 11th.
11th.
Yes, sir.
From, you said, was it 10 to 3?
10 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Fabulous.
And, I mean, one of the, if I could just add one more element, I've had the fortune of meeting Holocaust survivors, both here as a member of the American Philatelic Society, but also in my political career before this, and one of the amazing things is that all of them consistently said the same thing, which is they remained silent for a long period of time, and it was the Skokie case in the 1960s in Chicago that reawakened this need for them to communicate, and all of them became very outspoken about what they lived through and what they survived, not just for themselves, but also to carry on the memories of those who were lost. And we feel like we owe it as a debt to them, that we can carry this message forward for them as we're starting to lose them.
Thank you, Scott. I think we're ready for a motion at this point, then.
I will move to adopt proclamation 27 of 2023.
We have a motion in second to adopt proclamation number 27 of 2023 proclaiming the official dedication and opening of a Philatelic Memorial of the Holocaust exhibit. All those in favor do so by saying aye, aye, pose nay, motion carries. Come on up, Scott. We'll run the proclamation.
You see the Philatelic?
Oh, good. I've had a little practice.
You know, I had to practice myself.
Thanks, Erin. Any questions from the press on the topic? No? All right.
11 million stamps, huh?
Wait, do you see how we've got them displayed?
That ought to be interesting. Yeah, I would think. That'll be an exciting exhibit to observe.
Thank you.
Very good, thanks. We'll move on to a couple of items before we go to another exciting item from planning, but right now, we'll go to resolutions. Resolution number eight, I believe Phil will be addressing this one. Come on up, Phil.
Morning. My name is Phil Ho. I'm with the Highway Safety Network. We're headquartered in Potsville, Pennsylvania. I work out of St. Mary's, Pennsylvania, and I'm here on behalf of the Highway Safety Network and Josh Woods, who is the Community Traffic Safety Project Coordinator. Unfortunately, he had other things scheduled for today that he was unable to attend, so I'm representing the company and Josh. Just a brief synopsis of this. The PennDOT District Two Community Traffic Safety Project is a federally funded program through the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation with the County of Center and the Highway Safety Network. The project goal is to raise public awareness about traffic safety issues in the PennDOT District Two counties of Cameron, Center, Clearfield, Clinton, Elk, McKee, Mifflin, Junianna, and Potter Counties through education, support for targeted enforcement campaigns, and judicial support. CTSPs share three major areas of concern, or focus areas, that include aggressive driving, unbelted occupants, and impaired driving. Other topics include distracted driving, older drivers, younger drivers, child passenger safety, heavy trucks, motorcycle safety, pedestrian safety, work zone safety, and bicycle safety. The CTSP coordinator serves as a point of contact and traffic safety outreach and education advocate within your community and communities within PennDOT District Two. They provide support to reduce the number of traffic-related crashes, injuries, and deaths. The CTSP is available to assist with program development, training, coordination, or media events, and the acquisition of materials and equipment. Any of these can be focused directly to a community-specific traffic safety needs, and depending on how you want this, for more information, I can go into some of the projects that he's done within Center County specifically, or-
Maybe if you have one really good one, yes.
Oh, one really good one.
Yes.
Well, I'll tell you what, there's some focus areas. Community outreach, education. He does CarFit programs for older drivers at Geisinger 65 Ford in the State College. He's a CarFit certified, whatever they do. Then there's an elementary outreach, and with that, he does school bus safety programs like Young Scholars, at the Young Scholars Charter School in Phillipsburg Elementary and the Penn Valley Elementary. There's a secondary outreach. He does impaired and distracted driving simulator at Belfont, Phillipsburg, Osceola State College High Schools. Distribution materials. He does Clifford Takes a Walk books from Shannon Valley YMCA School. Earned Media, he does radio interviews throughout the region on aggressive driving, distracted driving, buckle up, work zone, all within the Seven Mountains broadcast areas. He does social media, and this is way out of my zone, because I do no social media. Virtual content for educational programs called Sit Back Survival 101. The CTSPs out of our company have made YouTube presentations that can be used in the schools, so, and he assists with car seat checks. He's also a certified car seat technician, and he does trainings for the Sit Back Survival 101, 16 minutes, for school resource officers, educators within the schools.
Great, well, thank you, Phil. Appreciate that. We had the motorcycle community here, I think it was just last week, to talk about motorcycle safety. Unfortunately, we're all busy people. The car is usually the quickest way to get from point A to point B, but we all need to slow down, we all need to stop texting while we're driving, because we could accident- We have a motion in a second to adopt resolution number eight of 2023. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion carries. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming and pitching, Phil. Appreciate it. All right. Now we have Julia to come up and talk about our Valentine Street Houses demolition.
Good morning. I am asking for you to approve the contract with Earth Movers Unlimited for $28,477. The contract still needs, it is pending solicitor review, but I am asking for your approval for that contract. And it is to demolition the two single-family homes, 502 and 512 Valentine Street.
Thanks, Julia. And as a member, both homes were deemed either completely unfixable or not worth the money to fix.
Correct.
All right. Great. Thanks. Any questions? Commissioner Dershowitz? Anything from the press? No? All right. Can we have a motion to approve the contract with Earth Movers Unlimited, Inc. for $28,477 pending solicitor review?
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion carries. Great. Thanks, Julia. All right. Now for another exciting presentation from planning. I think Liz and Ray, you're, you're supervising at this point, right?
No.
All right. She's our expert, and thank you for working so hard on this, Liz, because it's really important to the citizens of Center County.
Yeah, it is really important. So on April 25th, Center County released its RFP for broadband expansion. Of course, the purpose of that was to find a project and get a provider lined up for something that the county could support. So over the next two weeks in May, I met with a dozen different companies virtually, offering a different wealth of technology. I was able to answer their questions and give them some feedback on what we were looking for. So the deadline closed on May 26th at 5:00 p.m., and the following submissions from the following companies were received. CenterWist Venture of Center Hall, PA; All Points Broadband Partners of Richmond, Virginia; Verizon, Pennsylvania of Philadelphia, PA; Comcast Cable Communications of Philadelphia, PA; and Pavlov Media of Champaign, Illinois. All companies had the required attachments that we had asked of them. Today, we're going to start the deep dive in coordination with our broadband consultants, CTC and Technology, to start to go through these proposals. On the surface, they are very comprehensive. They average about 30 to 40 pages apiece. So these companies that have provided submissions have certainly done their due diligence. After we get through those evaluations, then we will come back to the board with our recommendation of which project, or perhaps projects, would be feasible in some manner that you could support. So at this time, I would ask that you would please enter into contract negotiations for the Center County Broadband Expansion RFP.
Thank you very much, Liz. Really appreciate that. This is a huge amount of work, and we appreciate other people in planning helping pick up a few of your, your items in the meantime. We've been working hard on this for years, and now it's finally come to fruition. The broadband expansion RFP revolves around a $200 million state grant funded by our state legislators, which we appreciate, funded by, I believe, the American Rescue Plan funding. And obviously, we'd like to get at least our fair share of that funding. And due to your work, we have five different companies giving us proposals, four of whom I've heard of before. Pavlov Media is new. Can you tell us anything about them?
They are a subsidiary of a CCG Fiber. And actually, you know, the RFP got attention. There were probably half of the companies that reached out to Center County were not from Pennsylvania. But as you can see from the list, the majority are the incumbents that already operate here.
It's fabulous, and it's great to see that we've had such strong interest in providing broadband to our roughly 8,000 residences that are either pretty much unserved or drastically underserved throughout, throughout the county. Very much appreciate that. I'll hand it over to Commissioner Concepcion.
Yeah, just to thank you for all of your work to get this done on a tight deadline. This, you know, I think everyone who's following this issue might, may or may not be aware that the, we had been knowing that this window for grants was going to open, but we didn't know exactly when or what the guidelines were going to be. So Liz and her department had done a great deal of work to prepare for this grant opening opportunity. And by doing the broadband studies, so that we knew where our unserved and underserved addresses were, having that information has really enabled this process to move forward as well as it has, and to do so on some tight deadlines. So looking forward to, to seeing this move forward, and thank you for all your work.
Great comments. Commissioner Concepcion. Commissioner Dershowitz?
I guess I just have, my first question is, your action is suggesting that we go into contract negotiations. Are the, I guess the possibility exists that one or more of these entities may, may or may not be an appropriate fit for Center County until you go through the, the details and see what?
Yeah, you are correct. So this evaluation process, over the next two days, we're going to be looking at six points. The comprehensiveness, which these companies have demonstrated, that they delivered on, the technical solution. Luckily, with the companies that responded, they are fiber to the home and cable, and that's what we were asking for. The wireless companies opted not to submit, but the funding is very clear, especially for the Capital Projects Fund. We, of course, are going to look at affordability. Do these companies offer those kind of packages for residents? And just kind of the overall vitality, and what their experience is.
I guess my second question is, I, I guess the terminology, contract negotiations, what our, what our role in this actually is, and whether or not we are, are we a pass through? Are we a, are we a, a willing participant in this project? I mean, where do we, where do we fit into the, into the matrix of things here?
So what is the county's role? That's a really good question. No, the county at this point really isn't positioned to serve as the pass-through. We're really going to be the partner in this. And, and that, what that looks like, you know, we don't know yet until we get into those proposals. The Broadband Development Authority has strongly suggested that any of these ISPs that want to move forward with an application, that they get themselves local government partners. So again, with the, with the letters of support, things that the county can demonstrate and, and help backfill for these projects.
Yeah, I think that's going to be, for the actual contract negotiation stage, we need to figure out what our role moving forward is going to be in this process, for financially and with contractual. That would be my thought.
So the next step for the Board of Commissioners is being part of this review process, correct? And will be?
Yes, yeah.
Have the opportunity to interact with the municipalities where these projects may be located, to see about the level of support within those municipalities as well, correct?
Yeah, exactly.
To, to explain for the folks at home, I, I'm currently the president of our SEDOCAG Regional Economic Development Group, and I'm one of only a select few commissioners across the state who serve on two County Commissioner Association of Pennsylvania Policy Committees, both agriculture and community and economic development. And I've worked hard to ensure that the commissioners statewide have made this a priority. And what's so valuable about what Liz is doing here is what the commissioners are able to offer during this particular grant round is broad. There are counties to the west of us, near Pittsburgh, that have formed joint county groups to actually provide the fiber direct to the home. Now, here in Center County, that's a bit of a heavy lift for us. We have one person who's working very hard on this, and to actually offer the services directly to our citizens, we're just not prepared for that. It's too much. We really would prefer to work with private sector partners. There is an option where some counties, they are simply doing a pass-through. You send us the grant proposals. We don't write letters of support. We don't check anything out. We don't vet anything. We don't provide any local match money. We just send it over to the state and wish you good luck. Center County's somewhere in the middle. We're going to work with these providers. They're going to use data that Liz worked so hard on, starting all the way back in 2019, to prepare for. And the commissioners are going to say, you know, we love most of these projects. We're going to write letters of support for most of these projects. And a couple of them are so important to us and are covering areas that perhaps don't have the population density of some of the other areas, that we might actually devote some of our own American Rescue Plan funding to provide the local match. Am I roughly describing that correctly, Liz?
Yeah, you are. And, and the other consideration for Center County's role as a supporting partner is, granted, we're the fifth-largest county in the Commonwealth. You know, that's our footprint in the middle of the state. Many of these providers that want to pursue the Capital Projects Fund, they have very large footprints statewide. So they could essentially consider Center County's support in this project in the larger picture of, of what their intentions are.
Great. Thanks. Any questions from the press? I know, Gary, you've been following this for years.
Companies listed there that already have customers in CenterWist, Verizon, don't get, do they necessarily have some type of advantage, or they don't?
They will have to be evaluated. That's, you know, if they come through, if they hit all the criteria that was laid out by CTC, and they rank well, then they can certainly be considered. I wouldn't say that they would be favored, because they are an incumbent. If they can prove to us that they fulfilled those requirements of the RFP, then they can seriously be considered and recommended.
Is there a timeline for this vetting process, if it is approved and moving forward?
I would like to get my recommendations with CTC's assistant, back to the commissioners, I believe it's this Friday, to have some more, to have some more discussion. Yes, it's moving very fast, because the Capital Projects Fund deadline is July 10th. So we wanted to kind of get into that halfway point out of courtesy for these companies that want to pursue the funding.
Chances are, we may have some questions for them. And we, we may say, you know, we really like your project. Are you willing to commit to it without any local match? All right? You're going to need some local match. How much are you looking for? It's going to be a, probably potentially, a couple of week negotiation process back and forth. Because thankfully, we're in a situation where we have a lot of proposals. I mean, Liz, you say we have somewhere between 150 and 200 pages of contractual language that we've got to work our way through.
In total, yes.
Liz, do you have any idea how nimble the contract negotiation process is going to be with some of these companies, because you are some pretty big hitters here?
They are, yes. They are some-
Their experience in the past is they usually don't move at light speed.
Yeah, they, they don't move at light speed. And I, I think this is probably a, a good situation where some of our technical assistants on the solicitor, solicitor side in the background may be necessitated. Because there could be some, you know, I, I don't want to use the word sticking points, but there may be some sticking points. But I, I think if everybody, you know, if the private and public sector, if they can work together and see what the better good is, that maybe those negotiations will go smoother than anticipated.
And then, of course, very fortunately, with this level of interest for the first round of major grants, hopefully we'll have a lot of interest for the second $300 million-plus BEAD grant round coming up this winter, too. So fabulous work, Liz. Great, great to see so much progress. Great to see five companies very interested in working with the county and all the other local stakeholders to provide more broadband in Center County. This is fabulous.
Well, thank you.
Any additional comments, Commissioner Concepcion? Commissioner Dershowitz? This is the culmination of things you've been working on for four years, Liz. Four years. And now we have successful, it's not the final step.
It's not the culmination.
It's not the culmination. It's not, maybe not the final step. But thank you so much for the work you've done, and Ray, and all of planning, to tee us up well for, for this round of grants. Appreciate it. Great. I think we're ready to, oh, any more questions from the press?
Isn't it early to say overall that this will be a customer?
Service bills in Center County?
That I can't speak of. The Affordable Connectivity Program is still out there. It has not gotten a lot of people to sign up for it. You know, the idea would be if, if another company can provide some competition in, in an area, that ideally, just naturally, would drive down prices. But otherwise, you know, I really, I don't know if anybody really has an idea of what that's going to look like.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. All right. Unless there's any questions from the press, I think we're ready to take a motion.
So I will move to enter into contract negotiations for the Center County Broadband Expansion RFP.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor of county government entering into contract negotiations for the Center County Broadband Expansion RFP, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay? Motion carries. Again, thank you so much, Liz. All right. I don't know if Jason, Jason is out in the hallway, here to talk about an engagement letter with Plant Moran.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having me here today. This is just the engagement letter to continue to retain Plant Moran's services during the 15-month implementation process of the new ERP system. And just to give you an idea, the maximum total of this contract is going to be $81,125 for this phase of the project. The first two phases of the project were originally budgeted at $177,000, but came in at $149,500. So we were under budget on the first two phases, and really, that's a testament to the cooperation of all the departments and stakeholders here at the county, working through those initial first two phases, and the work performed in my office as well, to get through those phases a little quicker and with a little less pain points than could sometimes have come up during those two phases. So the third phase, this is really just the, Plant Moran is going to serve as the advisory project manager, help both sides, universe and the county, work through that project so that we come out at the end successfully. And certainly, once the project is implemented, that contract will end. So we, if we're implemented prior to August, end of August next year, we will, this will be less than what the $81,000.
Great. Well, thank you, Jason, for bringing the first two phases in under budget. And I know we're looking like we'll bring this current phase in at close to, or maybe even under budget. Commissioner Concepcion, any questions?
No, thanks. It seems like getting this new system in place is going to be a good step forward for our financial planning capabilities in the county, so.
Commissioner Dershowitz, any questions?
I'm good.
All right. We'll take a motion now.
I will move to approve the engagement letter with Plant Moran, P L L C.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor of approving the engagement letter, with Plant Moran, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay? Motion carries. Thanks, Jason.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. All right. Now, I'm going to make sure we're, go moving to the right page here. I think, looks like we have Phil back up again. For planning and community development, looks like we're doing a joiner with some additional counties.
Correct. The CTSP project encompasses PennDOT District Two. Each one of the districts, PennDOT districts, has a Community Traffic Safety Project Coordinator. And the counties in which PennDOT District Two, Center County, is part of, consists of Center, Cameron, Clearfield, Clinton, Elk, Junianna, McKean, Mifflin, and Potter Counties. And for those nine counties within that district is where that funding will be spent with the projects that Josh Woods conducts for them.
Great. Thanks. Thanks for your explanation. Any questions, Commissioner Concepcion? Commissioner Dershowitz?
I'm good.
All right. We'll take a motion now.
I will move to approve the contract with Highway Safety Network Incorporated.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor of approving the contract with the Highway Safety Network, Inc., do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay? Motion carries. Thanks, Jason.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. All right. Now, I'm going to make sure we're, go moving to the right page here. I think, looks like we have Phil back up again. For planning and community development, looks like we're doing a joiner with some additional counties.
Correct. The CTSP project encompasses PennDOT District Two. Each one of the districts, PennDOT districts, has a Community Traffic Safety Project Coordinator. And the counties in which PennDOT District Two, Center County, is part of, consists of Center, Cameron, Clearfield, Clinton, Elk, Junianna, McKean, Mifflin, and Potter Counties. And for those nine counties within that district is where that funding will be spent with the projects that Josh Woods conducts for them.
I will move to approve the contract with Highway Safety Network Incorporated.
Second. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor of approving the contract with the Highway Safety Network, Inc., do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Thanks, Phil.
Thank you.
All right. Now Ray's already lined up to talk about an MOU for a small subdivision.
Sure.
All right. What are we building today?
Today, we have a simple two-lot subdivision in Marion Township. In front of you have a memorandum of understanding for a final two-lot subdivision for David and Rachel Glick. This is three quarters of a mile east of the village of Jacksonville. And it's accessed by a private drive, which is going to be amended, called High Valley Drive. So on the aerial photograph, you can see the Glick property outlined in blue of approximately 76.46 acres. That will be subdivided to the, to the right. You'll see a red line that curves into another property. That is High Valley Drive. This is the proposed subdivision plan for the Glicks, Lot 1, RB1, of 38.23 acres. Hall already has a single-family home and access drive off of High Valley Drive. Lot 1, RB2, is the subdivided property of 38.23 acres with soil testing. And that will also have access off of High Point Drive. This will be amended to add, I believe, 5,000 square feet of impervious coverage with the cul-de-sac. If you look at the current aerial photo at the top, the cul-de-sac is not in existence. But since we're going to have an additional property accessing that, that will need improvements and amended to their existing deed book and page number for the right-of-way. It's fairly simple today. That's our proposal.
We have two formats.
Yes.
Mr. Dershowitz, any questions, Commissioner Concepcion?
I think so.
Mr. Dershowitz?
All good? Thank you.
We'll take a motion.
I will move to add the MOU for the final plan, two-lot subdivision of lands of David S. and Rachel L. Glick to next week's consent agenda.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor of adding the MOU, final plan for the two-lot subdivision, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Thanks, Ray. Thank you. All right. We have a very short consent agenda today. Unless there's any questions or concerns, move forward with that.
I move to approve this week's consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion, a second. To approve this week's consent agenda, all those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. We'll move to Commissioner Concepcion for a check run.
So this week's check run, I wanted to recognize a check that we have to Strawberry Fields. This is one of our really critical human service agencies the county partners with to provide services related to intellectual disabilities and early intervention services for young children. So with that, I would move to approve the check run dated May 26, 2023.
All right. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor of approving the May 26 check run, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. All right. Now we're moving to our letters of support. We have two very important, very meaty letters of support today, both offered by local entrepreneurs. Always love to have the entrepreneurs here. I believe Gordon Kaufman is up first for a letter of support for an Appalachian Regional Commission grant application that would be used to help build the High Point Skate Park located in State College.
Good morning, everybody. Thanks for this opportunity to be here today to talk to the Board of Commissioners. I'm here today, I live in the borough of State College, and I'm representing a group of volunteers and by default also the borough of State College, who's the applicant for this, this grant. And I'm here today to request a letter of support for the outdoor adventure, the High Point Outdoor Adventure Park Grant Application. This is an Appalachian Regional Commission grant that we're applying for. And it is vetted, I think, shepherded through by the Department of Community and Economic Development. In addition to letters of support from elected officials, we're also going to be getting letters of support from local business owners specific to job creation and private investment in, in the community because of the park. So that's our two-pronged approach. Since this grant focuses on, on job creation, and we believe this park, even though it wasn't designed to be a destination park, it's really a community park, we see this park becoming a destination for the community and being a tremendous asset. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to, to answer those.
Happy to see you here, Gordon. And Gordon is the owner of Bull City Brewing in Bollesburg. I was at your fine establishment multiple times this weekend. And at one point, I saw you actually having to rearrange the bike rack because there were too many bikes on the bicycle rack. I'll also mention that Julie there in the green is with Senator Lagerhold. This park is feet outside of his district, in the borough, very close to the Ferguson Township line. But I'll pass it over to Commissioner Concepcion.
So I've been kind of following the, the process with this project for many years.
Yeah.
It's been a long time coming. There's been a lot of people who have been pushing to have something like this in our community for a long time. Really happy to see this moving forward and getting some momentum. So really happy to support this. Yeah. And really enjoyed your new establishment as well. Was there with my children over the weekend as well. So yeah, I'm, keep us in the loop so that we can, you know, help advocate for this in any way possible.
Great. Thank you.
I had parked in your parking lot yesterday.
It was busy.
Yeah, you have a great, you have a great place there.
Thank you.
You've done very well.
Appreciate it.
But that being aside, I, as an aside, I really do support this project. This is going to be great and meaningful. And I think it'll, it'll, it'll be a game changer. I think it's something our area could desperately use. So good stuff.
Yeah, I just, just as a follow-up, we have raised, we're proud to say we've raised over a million dollars thus far. And we believe that, that this grant could put us, you know, to a point where we can schedule the, the design, the build out of the park, which would be scheduled for the summer of 2024.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
I know we've, we've had a lot of positive traction with the Harvest Fields Outdoor Adventure Park, and huge turnout for their ribbon cutting a couple of weekends ago. I know you were there, too.
Yep.
But we'd just like to thank you and all the other entrepreneurs of Center County who are giving back to the community. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
I think it's, like, we've kind of are creating this ecosystem here that I think is, whether this park is a destination in and of itself, it's part of an ecosystem of outdoor recreation here in Center County that is just becoming really fruitful and really exciting. So.
Yeah, we have a tremendous amount of momentum. In fact, tomorrow, the Happy Valley Adventure Bureau will be hosting their grant award announcement at Bull City Brewing. So we're really excited that those two are coming together. So, yeah.
Yeah, $840,000 of grants. Questions from the press on this letter of support?
I think the latest start is regulations this fall about a year ago on this, as you get more awareness. Funding or whatever, are those plans still about the same, or are there changes kind of being made along the way?
So the most recent design has not been changed since the last, you know, presentation of the design. And we, we decided to make sure that the design accommodated all of the potential users for the park, which will be skateboards, BMX, bikes, as well as scooters. And there had been some discussion about perhaps doing this in phases, but we wanted to make sure that we built the very best park for all those intended users. And currently, with the amount of money raised, which hopefully will include this, this grant award, we can do, we can build the park that we've always wanted to build. So the design's the same.
Thank you.
Great question, Gary. Any other questions from the press? Oh, all right. Well, thanks again, Gordon. And I think we'll, we're ready to take a motion.
I'll move to approve the letter of support for the grant application for High Point Skate Park.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to approve the letter of support for the American Regional Commission Grant Application for the High Point Skate and Outdoor Adventure Park. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Great. Thanks again, Gordon.
Appreciate it.
And now talking also about entrepreneurs helping the local community. If we could have Eric Roundtree come to the podium for a massive factory in Phillipsburg. And Julie, I will send this, you, I'm assuming if I'm trying to get a hold of Senator Lagerhold, I send it to you for a letter of support on this? Great.
Yeah, there's a link on the website.
Okay.
But we-
Wonderful. Wonderful. Thanks. So Eric has a huge project for Phillipsburg that he'd like to talk to us about.
All right. Well, thanks for having me here and for considering the letter of support. So I representing EC Power. I'm the head of EC Power, which is headquartered right here in State College. It was founded by one of the professors at Penn State University, Chiang Wong. And we are partnering with a company called Flux Power, which is a publicly traded company out of San Diego, California. So they currently produce batteries for lithium ion powered forklifts and ground support equipment for airlines and different applications like that, and small buses, low, low speed buses and other lower voltage applications. They've expanded, they've filled out all of their capacity in California and looking to expand to the East Coast. And EC Power invented a new technology for lithium ion batteries around five or six years ago. It made its public debut at the Winter Olympics last year and powered around 500 buses at the Winter Olympics. So we're very proud of that technology. That was the first generation. We've successfully developed the second generation and are finishing out the third now, which is what we intend to commercialize in this plant. The, we've been working on plans for about a year to make 200 megawatt hours of capacity of these types of batteries. And we've been working with the Department of Defense to generate customers for that, along with the material handling industry. And so Flux Power has tentatively agreed to buy all of that initial supply. And so we're coming together to form a consortium and build a facility together to manufacture both the cells, which is what EC Power's responsibility would be, and the battery packs that then power the equipment, which would be Flux Power's responsibility. And so we're going after funds that have been set aside by the federal government through the building infrastructure law for clean and green energy. And so this particular application is for revitalizing communities that have been impacted by the energy transition, primarily coal. So the entire western side of Center County is a coal-affected area and has quite a few coal sites on it. And so it's a, it's a prime location to meet the, the mission of the federal money. And so we're going after $25 million from the federal government, which will be matched by $25 million from both EC Power and Flux Power, to build that facility and supply 200 megawatt hours of capacity to the Department of Defense and the material handling industry. And so that would be a great thing for Center County, you know. So the, already, whether you know this or not, Penn State is one of the premier locations for batteries. And so they have quite a few professors focused on lithium ion batteries at the university. But the majority of their students leave this county and go elsewhere, primarily to the West Coast, where you have some R and D firms developing batteries. So this is a great opportunity to retain that talent in Center County and also to create around 100, 250 high-paying manufacturing jobs. So.
That was what I wanted you to finish with. That's perfect. So you're going after $25 million federal grant. I believe you would possibly be the only factory of this type on the East Coast?
Not on the East Coast, but in the state of Pennsylvania. Definitely, yes. So Pennsylvania is known for its lead acid battery manufacturing. But actually, so what we call the, the battery, lithium ion battery belt is being developed right now. It kind of starts in Georgia and goes up through Tennessee, Kentucky, Ohio, Michigan, and then New York. And Pennsylvania has just been left out of this. And so this will be a great opportunity for Center County to stake the flag of this is where the center of lithium ion batteries for our state. So it will be the first in the state.
And you also mentioned that this is the lithium, lithium ion style battery. So it's cleaner from a manufacturing standpoint?
Yeah. The reason it's being adopted in the material handling industry is, so we, everyone associates it with cars and cell phones. And the reason it's adopted there is because it's very lightweight. But the, for the material handling industry, it's, its adoption is because it's cleaner. So currently, it's about a 50/50 split in that industry between internal combustion engines, either propane or diesel fuel, and lead acid batteries. And so the problem with, I think everyone's aware of, of the issues with powering it with internal combustion engines, it's all over the news. But you may be less aware that lead acid batteries aren't the cleanest things. And they're also very dangerous to work with. And you have to, so when facilities operate their material handling with lead acid batteries, they have to have an entire room devoted to those batteries where they are, and, and an operator has to unload all those batteries every single shift and load them back on. And they have to like do maintenance on them where they're rewatering them, adding new acid to them. So there's quite a lot of chemicals involved, whereas a lithium ion battery goes on the forklift and it outlasts, generally it outlasts the forklift itself. So it's then taken off after it's done. And it charges fast enough that they don't ever have to replace that. They just plug it in when they're using the bathroom and get back to work. So.
So this sounds like an advantage, a situation where we're leveraging Penn State technology to create jobs here locally by working with local entrepreneurs.
Yeah. Well, I, I would say Penn State talent. So EC Power has been behind all of the technology that'll be used in here. But Penn State talent definitely would be, you know, we're keen on keeping it here for that reason.
Perfect. We'll be, hand it over to Commissioner Concepcion with any questions.
Yeah. So this is exciting. I'm kind of a nerd about electrification and have been following some of the development of this for quite a few years in terms of, of, you know, EVs and being able to, to use electric power in these areas. And it seems like especially in, when you're talking about an internal closed-in manufacturing setting, having a forklift that's running on battery power instead of combustion means you've got cleaner air for workers in those facilities.
Yeah. Cleaner air for workers in the facilities. And most Fortune 500 companies have invested heavily in renewables. So when you're powering the, their material handling equipment with batteries, you're, you're using an entirely renewable source. So it's, it's much cleaner for the environment, the working environment and the environment as a whole. Yeah.
So do you have a parcel of land in mind where you would potentially build?
We're still scoping that out. You know, we've been working over, so EC Power already has like a fabrication facility in the Shannon Valley Business Park over there, the Shannon Valley Enterprise Center on Shady Lane Drive in Phillipsburg. And so we've been considering that area. I mean, that's what got us involved. Looking into this specific grant was finding out that we were eligible at that location to build out there. We're still scoping out the exact location. You know, on the Flux Power side, they, they really don't care where it goes. They just need an operating base out of the East Coast. So we're trying to leverage everything we have to keep it right here in Center County. Yeah.
I think this is, in terms of the kind of economic development planning, that many of us who have been involved in those discussions at Center County, we've talked about the need to build our own capacity here. Not just that we need to try to recruit in firms from the outside, but being able to build from local talent and entrepreneurs come in connection, who may have had connections with Penn State, had their education there, but then are ready to, to move on and do these kinds of things. It seems like really exciting project and, and really in line with the kind of strategic planning that's been happening around economic development in Center County. So excited.
Thank you. Commissioner Dershowitz, any questions?
To keep it real, just thank you for considering Center County because I, I think it would be, well, first of all, I think it'd be fantastic if we keep all that, that manpower and all that education, you know, within a few miles of a major research facility. But also, this is a big leap. And I'm sure you've, you've considered all the potential pitfalls that go with, you know, starting a, you know, project of this, of this size. And I have to applaud you for your, your courage. So.
I appreciate that. I do want to, you know, so the way we think about this, in terms of the battery world today, it's a fairly small project for batteries. And so this gives you the opportunity to, to possibly draw a big one later on.
Pretty big project to get started.
Yeah. Yeah. But I just mean, when you think about the economics of it, it's a, it's a small lithium ion manufacturing facility. So, but we are very proud to bring it here and kind of stake our claim and showcase to the world the technologies that's been developed right here in Center County. Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks. It's Dr. Roundtree, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah. So thank you for coming. I know you've been in conversation with the commissioners now for about a year. And then you and I had coffee a little over a week ago. And you said, Mark, I need these things called letters of support. Can you help me out with it? And so in between meetings today, I'll be sending out a lot of requests to our state representatives, state senators. I'm already in conversation with GT Thompson's office. I know they contacted you over the weekend. They were working real hard on this. And we already have some positive traction with both US Senators Casey and Fetterman's staffs as well. So.
Well, we, again, we deeply appreciate all of your support. Being able to keep it here in Center County would be huge for, for EC Power to, to build out our R and D base here, too, as well.
Wonderful. Let's open it up for questions from the press.
Do you have a timetable for the project?
So it would start in the spring of next year, and it would run three years for the, to build it out. So, you know, that would be kind of, we would work from the back of the process- So, you know, that would be kind of, we would work from the back of the process, so we would kind of start with the pack manufacturing, so we would be able to bring cells from elsewhere and manufacture packs and start shipping those out around the end of year two, and then we would hopefully have the cells coming online at the end of year three.
And you mentioned a number of employees projected?
So right now, we're expecting around 100. It could be as high as 150. A lot of times, it takes a little bit of a larger workforce to get these facilities off the ground.
So, yeah, we would have however many construction personnel you would need to build a nearly $50 million manufacturing facility with all its equipment, and then as Dr. Roundtree mentioned, somewhere between 90 to 150 employees about three years out. Obviously, manufacturing jobs pay well, great family-sustaining-type workforce, and then, of course, you're going to be purchasing things locally and utilizing advertising firms and legal companies and buying all sorts of different products to help manufacture these fabulous batteries. So I think, I really hope we can get this, because it'll be a win in every direction for Center County. Any additional questions, comments? All right, we'll take a motion now.
I'll move to approve the letter of support for a grant proposal to establish a lithium-ion battery manufacturing facility in Center County.
Second, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of a letter of support for the grant proposal to establish a lithium-ion battery manufacturing facility in Center County, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. Thanks again, Eric.
Thank you very much.
As those layers of support keep coming in, we'll keep staying in contact. Thanks. All right, John, an administrator's report.
Nothing to report at this time.
And Steve, move over to voter registration report.
I do have one today.
You're still probably pretty busy processing the results of the primary.
Probably next week.
All right. And the Board of Commissioners and Salary Board meetings for Thursday, June 1 of this week, have been canceled. Do we have any executive sessions to report or hold, John?
No executive sessions to report or hold.
All right, and the remainder of our public meeting schedule is, there is a Board of Elections meeting here today at 3:00 PM, and then next week, we have a Commissioners meeting at 10:00, and a Commissioners, Board of Commissioners work session at 11:00. And then on Thursday, June 8, tentatively scheduled, a Board of Commissioners meeting and Salary Board meeting at 10:00 AM. Any additional questions from the press? No? All right, action-packed meeting today. We're ready to take a motion to adjourn now.
Well, before we do, I actually had one other item. I was just, I guess, just thinking about some, you know, going over a few things, and I was just hoping that we might be able to ask the solicitor what impact that the proposed RCO ordinance would have on some of these upcoming road, bridge, and broadband projects that we will be funding. If we could get some clarification on the non-traditional construction projects in the county that we have infrastructure, so I would appreciate that.
All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn now?
I will move to adjourn.
Second, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjourning the Commissioners meeting at 11:11, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Are you looking to stay active and healthy in the comfort of your own home? CNET has a variety of exercise programs designed to help you stay fit and increase strength and flexibility. Strength training, moving freely, and zesty chair exercises all work on improving flexibility, ease of movement, and core body strength. Gentle yoga is a specifically designed yoga program that is easy on the joints and easy for beginners. Chair yoga has been created for those with limited mobility. CNET's exercise programs air several times each week on Channel 98 CETV. For specific airing times, please visit cnet1.org and click on CNET Schedules, or call CNET at 814-238-5031. Nothing good on TV? You're just not watching the right channels.
The League of Women Voters was founded almost 100 years ago with the right to vote for women. Not only the right to vote, but an informed vote.
You need to know everything about that candidate. You need to be able to ask that candidate questions.
I think that the organization is going to continue to attract a diverse membership, and I think that that will help us in working toward the goal of better representation for everybody.
There's a wonderful opportunity here for people who are younger to come and learn from women who have been part of social movements for years and years.
It's our job to be a mentor to the newer members, because they're the ones, after all, that are going to be carrying the banner of the league into the next 100 years. We stand for the nonpartisanship that we should all have as leaders in our democracy today.